Hi, everyone. This is Cook County Commissioner Almanaya, Chair of Cook County Commission on Social Innovation, and we will call this commission meeting to order. Just as a point of reference in compliance with Governor Executive Order 2020-7, 2020-10, and 2020-18, attendance at this meeting will be by remote means only. Instructions on how to attend the meeting and participate in written testimony or written comment will be provided on the Cook County Legisstar webpage at cookcounty.legisstar.com prior to today's date, January 21, 2020. The proceedings will be able to be viewed today, January 21, 2021. I apologize, the previous one was 2021, not 2020. At 4:00 p.m., written comments on any of the items listed in the agenda are accepted by email at seventhdistrict.office@gmail.com until 24 hours prior to this meeting. Written comments provided up to 24 hours prior to the meeting may be read aloud or summarized at the meeting to abide by the three minutes per comment that is allowed. And we will try our best to read the statements in their entirety. Copies of the agenda and items to be considered at this meeting are available electronically at the Cook County website at cookcounty.legisstar.com. Please note that the Cook County Building 118 North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois 60602 has reopened with restrictions to the public until a date to be determined due to the current circumstances of the COVID-19 pandemic. With that, I will ask staff if they can call the role for attendance, please. Anna Wajardo?
Here.
Carrie Thomas? Carrie Thomas? Absent. Kristen Freeman?
Present. Sorry, I was trying to get off of you.
Thank you. Harold Rice?
Present.
Harry Austin?
Present.
Howard Mills?
Here.
John Yonan?
Present.
Kristi De Laurentis? Kristi De Laurentis? Absent. Mark Wayne? Mark Wayne? Absent. Morgan Malone?
President, here.
Thank you. Wendy Reamer?
Here.
Sochiil Espinoza?
Here.
Sochiil Flores?
Present.
Roger Cooley?
Here.
Jerry Agapay?
Present.
Sol Anderson?
Present.
Patrick Brutus? Patrick Brutus? Absent. Karen Norington Reeves? Karen Norington Reeves? Elder Woman Maria Haddad? Elder Woman Maria Haddad? Absent. Commissioner Anaya?
Present.
Commissioner, you have quorum. Thank you very much, Yesenia. With established quorum, I'll now call for public testimony. Do we have any public testimony for this commission meeting?
No public testimony was submitted for this meeting.
Thank you. So we'll start off, again, welcome, everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you so much for joining us and being a part of this meeting that we're hosting today, the first one in 2021. And with the new president and leading this country. So we'll start off with some of the pending items that we need for approval and vote. So I'll actually ask for requests of anybody if they can motion the approval of the minutes from the September 17 and the November 12, 2020 meetings. I don't know if there's somebody that would like to move the approval of those two.
So moved. Harold Rice. Second, Howard Mills.
Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Mills. Any questions or corrections on those minutes? Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed or present? Okay, without, looks like the ayes have it. So both minutes are approved. Thank you, everyone. So really quickly, I'm really excited about the presentations that we have today. One from our, one of our wonderful members here, commission members of the social innovation who has been with us since the inception of this commission, with my predecessor when this was established. But before that, I do want to give just a quick update overall in our office. As you all know, we've been working very diligently to completing the annual report. So both Yesenia and Victoria, who I think Victoria could not be with us this afternoon, but we're working to finalize that and we'll be sending it your way when it's final so that it could be presented to the Cook County Board of Commissioners. It's important, I know we've highlighted some of the hiccups and some of the delays we had, to be quite frankly, during the pandemic and meeting because, of course, our attention was in ensuring that residents throughout Cook County had the necessary needs and that all of the organizations that we're a part of were doing a lot of great work on the ground, to be quite frankly. So because there were delays, we are still accepting and we're still discussing anything else that needs to be a part of the report. So once we have the draft, we'll appreciate any type of feedback, any ideas that should be incorporated. Just make sure that you reach out to our office so we can incorporate any of those either discussions or ideas going forward as we set up and plan also for the strategic plan that we've been talking about the past few months. So I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that. And the other thing that I want you all to take into consideration, you know, something that could be, in some ways, associated to this commission is the vaccine process that the Cook County is involved with. As you all know, we are in charge of the Cook County Health and Hospital System, and we've been actively, not only ensuring that the workforce in Cook County Health is vaccinated, but we're also working very diligently on how the vaccines are going to be done through each phase. So as we talk about equity, as we talk about reopening and recovery, the vaccination is going to be a really big and important part to that. So we will keep you updated as information becomes available to us and where they are in the phase and whether we're aligned with what the state is declaring and what other counties, surrounding counties around us are, you know, going through the phases and whether we're on the same phase. And also, of course, with the city of Chicago. But if they're, you know, one of the most important issues that we've brought up during this time is the disparities that we saw with the impacts of certain communities with COVID and the pandemic and the virus. But also how we need to, you know, carry that information over to a lot of the work that we're doing with recovery and with vaccination. So I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned that. I know one of the aspects that we're going to be talking about today has to do a little bit with that. And I'm very excited, again. This was something that we tried to plan out for a few months, and it didn't work out at first for scheduling purposes. But I'm excited to introduce Howard Mills, one of our commissioners, and that has been a part, again, since the inception of this commission and also is very, very much involved and has an active role in Cook County and in the community by serving a lot of appointments that aim to improve the region, both economically and socially. So Howard serves as a chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee of Cook County, or EDAC, as we know it. Additionally, he's a member of the Council of Economic Advisers for Madam President, Cook County, Madam President Toni Preckwinkle, and is now a member of the President's Council also on digital equity. He's been working with the Code Project. So without further ado, Yesenia, if we can pull up his presentation and then we'll get started with Howard. Thank you, Howard, for agreeing to talk to us a little bit about the digital gap and how Cook County is addressing it and what potentially we could do as commission members to help that.
Please, Commissioner, understand how grateful I am to you for inviting this presentation and for the patience of the members because of some scheduling issue that I'll go into briefly as we go through the slides. I want to make sure everyone can hear me. Is it better, the audio now? Yes. So I hope today, in these slides, which will be made available to you, and of course, the introduction that I'll be making to one of our new partners for Cook County on the digital equity front, Casey Sorensen. I hope to give you a brief background on how this came to be and that this is specifically not an issue that came to the president's attention because of COVID. And in fact, it preceded any virus because this was already something that had affected our region for way too many years. And so I'm going to give you some highlights of before, during, and after this pandemic. If we can go to the next slide. And on these highlights, I want to make sure that I cover it as it is, in reality, a Cook County priority. The Council on Digital Equity Code has served a critical role as an advisor to Cook County Board President Preckwinkle, and I hope to other commissioners, in addition to you, Commissioner Naya. One of the things that we look at is both the regional infrastructure and the digital needs of the individuals. To that extent, I want to thank fellow commissioners on the Social Innovation Commission, Sochiil Flores, Karen Norington Reeves, and Kristi De Laurentis, all of whom are Code members and have participated in the few meetings that we've had and hopefully all future meetings when it comes to looking at what are our priorities and where should we focus. Part of the meetings that we had identified the resources we needed that didn't necessarily originate within Cook County, sometimes we have to go outside of the county to get a solution. And in that, I'll be introducing a good friend, Casey Sorensen, who's up in the Minneapolis area, correct, Casey? Just nod if I'm right. And thank you for joining us today, as well as a question and answer period. And for the members, I'm going to be around for the long haul, so you can always ask me a question on or offline. We have Casey for today, and I encourage as many questions as we can. In fact, finally, the thing that all members ask at the end of our meetings, which is a call to the members, what do we want? What do we need? There will be a call to help us resource digital devices and other partnerships on this initiative. If we can advance the slide, please. So I said earlier that this initiative was not born out of the virus and not born out of people in remote learning and all of the other circumstances for everything we had to do by way of protecting ourselves from a virus. This is a kind of distress that had been there all along. And in September of 2019, some of you were at the City Club for the speech when President Preckwinkle acknowledged that digital equity would be, going forward, a priority. Cutting forward a little bit during that fall, I went out and found the consulting firm of Oliver Wyman, and I engaged them on a pro bono basis for the county to conduct the foundational research of what was our assets and what did we lack when it came to broadband and digital. We broke the problem down, and this report is public, into digital connectivity, digital device, digital proficiency, which is also part of tech upskilling. And when we were conducting our research, looking for resources, we conducted national scan looking for outside resources or things within Cook County. We vetted the organizations, and PCs for People was identified as one key potential partner to the county to help us address connectivity and digital device disadvantages. By January 2020, again, before the pandemic, I came up with the idea that there should be a council established, and it was, the Code was established, to be an advisory body to the president to help us identify issues and solutions. And among the members are teachers, professors, librarians, healthcare executives, senior advisors from across the United States. That means other cities because there are other models for us to look at. And from this group, which was not an honorific thing, so much as a working group, we were able to come up with a number of ideas. And those ideas were compiled by yet another pro bono engagement through a consulting firm called Slalom Consulting. And Slalom Consulting advised us, the president's office, the commissioners, on how Code members could be engaged and how we could collaborate with them. And again, we're looking at teachers in public school systems, professors in universities within the region, libraries, of course, because they are one place where we can have as a channel for reaching people when it comes to digital, be it connectivity or device distribution. By the summer and fall of 2020, the virus was upon us, for sure. The county began meeting with the state of Illinois and PCs for People on a weekly basis to bring repurposed digital resources to our region. And ultimately, the reason I delayed my presentation and I appreciate the patience of all our members was because it took until December 16 for the joint press conference between Governor Pritzker and President Preckwinkle to announce PCs for People was planting their flag in Cook County suburbs. They are, in fact, here, and Casey will tell you about that. But I do want to make sure that you understand among their greatest needs is not just to appear in a region, but to connect to that region. As part of that objective, we had ongoing efforts to help source corporate digital pipeline of devices to be repurposed. Among the first major partners that I sought was one that would answer the objections of any organization that calls Cook County home, large and small. And that is, what is the security? There doesn't come more security needs than what a financial service company such as Morningstar has. And having Morningstar first in as one of our corporate partners with others that are following, we can address the need that people have to be assured that if I give my computers to this organization, will they be scrubbed? Will they be handled appropriately? And will they be distributed according to the terms of PCs for People? So additional corporate and government devices are being lined up by donors right now. We're also doing the one-to-many public relations that we can get from an organization called P33, which some of you may know, and our friend Brad Henderson over there, and Chicago Innovation, Tom Kuzmareski, who's also a longtime supporter. Could we advance the slide? Please. So digital equity in Cook County had as its basic need, and we have a statistic that can be confusing. It says 40% of unconnected Illinois households are in Cook County, including the city of Chicago. More relevant to a lot of people's question is how many households did not have broadband? This was what attracted President Preckwinkle's attention way back in early 2019, when I shared it with her, that fully a quarter of the households in our county did not have broadband access. And that included such things as having a cellphone because a lot of individuals will look at the phone and say, here's my solution. But their solutions don't all have unlimited data plans, such as many of us have, as an advantage. And so the high-speed digital access became one of the great initiatives that we were looking to create. Some of that is going to be public-private partnerships, and some of it's going to be using assets that the county already has and exploiting those assets going further. And there's more to that story down the road. The other element of digital equity is that the devices should be affordable. Affordable, to me, includes the cost of zero and up. And so that we look at this as something that is for everyone. Largely, we end up in the area of, well, if you have access and a device, the proficiency becomes the next critical skill. And that comes down to a lot of programs that are already going on in initiatives in the county and the school systems. But also, in a resource such as PCs for People, the idea of taking a computer, scrubbing it and fixing it to the point where it looks as if it's a completely repurposed machine, personal to you. And these solutions, ultimately, these solutions, ultimately, for the first three, as you go out in that target, you have to improve digital well-being, and you cannot do it with devices that are loaned. I told the president that we were going to look for a solution that was owned and in the home, that didn't put people in the parking lots of restaurants or near a bus that carried a mobile Wi-Fi, but rather designed for the post-pandemic world, where people, again, get connected for healthcare, government, and jobs, and education, and all the things that digital makes possible. So that, I came up with the word of digital, the phrase of digital well-being. And we are far from a group of, you know, a county where we have digital well-being can be declared. But we're on our way. And I wanted to go, if we could, please advance to the next slide. I'm going to leave this for you to look at. Casey Sorensen is the CEO of PCs for People, the solution I've been talking about for some of the rationale of why we have to address digital equity. I believe in his presentation, you'll hear a person who's not just come to Cook County to do something, but is going to stay in Cook County doing great things. And with that, I think, with your permission, Madam Chair, can I move on to introduce Casey?
Yes, please.
Casey, please. They can look at the numbers. You're going to go over these of your impact that you've had to date. And of course, we're going to be very concerned about, just get, how fast could you do what you, the magic you do for Cook County? Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you so much, Howard. Is someone able to? Oh, there, my screen sharing came up. I'll share my screen. All right, is that visible now?
Yes, we see it.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for the great introduction, Howard. I'm excited to be here today. As Howard mentioned, my name is Casey Sorensen, CEO at PCs for People. And as the title shows, what we do is sustainable digital equity. Personally, I joined the digital world nearly 30 years ago. As a farm kid in a small town in Montana, my mom saved up for a full year. She got a Doss for Dummies book and IBM computer, and I was hooked. From that day forward, I knew I wanted a career in IT. So I went to college to pursue that IT degree in a small town in Mankato, Minnesota. And when I was going to college, I learned about a county program handing out computers, and I decided to volunteer. You always know there's poverty in the community, but unless you have lived it or you're at least across the table from it, it's not something that's real. So it was an eye-opening experience that made me realize how fortunate I was to get a computer when I was nine. I graduated, went off to the corporate world, working for Deloitte Consulting, and after three years, stopped to think, what if I take my technical skills and see if I can get every nine-year-old boy and girl a home computer? So one day, in 2008, I quit my job and launched PCs for People in Minnesota. We started with 400 computers, and they were gone in two weeks. In two months, we had a 1,200-family waiting list. Demand had overrun our supply. I quickly realized this was not going to be a small, volunteer-run nonprofit like I participated in during college. This picture is on a busy day, soon after we launched, and our staff showed me the picture at the end of the day. I said, wait a minute, you took the time to take the pic, but not come outside and help? In case you didn't notice, that's my head people are reaching towards. This picture shows the huge demand for technology and how important tech access has become in our society. Local trusted access to low-cost devices, low-cost internet, and training is key for digital inclusion. This line formed because of a quality product that a trusted friend said, their computers are great, go to PCs for People. We had asked for donations of computers to launch, and we knew we needed a different approach. And the solution was to create a self-sustainable social enterprise with impact and revenue generation through each step. Today, we have a four-step model: source, refurbish, distribute, and support. The first, and as Howard alluded to, most critical step is sourcing. Asking for donations from a Fortune 500 resulted in a small quantity of 20 to 50 computers. But each year, that Fortune 500 was retiring thousands of computers. We needed to figure out how to unlock those thousands. Today, we are a certified IT recycler for over 1,800 companies and government entities. We deliver a valuable, free, certified-for-data-wiping and responsible recycling service. With this service, we don't just take good computers, we take everything. And I mean, everything. We're a one-stop IT recycler. We now get over four truckloads of technology every day, and this allows for revenue generation. The commodities the gentleman's holding there might look like a headache, but they actually provide value that can help fund our model. We also get items like servers that don't go into homes, that we can remarket and sell wholesale, and this helps with our sustainability. Getting truckloads of tech is also a workforce development opportunity. 20% of our staff in Minnesota are people with disabilities. In Ohio, we work with reentry populations and have IT training programs inside the prison system. In Colorado, we work with troubled youth. And in Cook County, we're planning on partnering with Cook County Workforce Partnership to provide IT job skills and IT certifications to opportunity youth in partnership with Karen Norington Reeves, I believe is part of this commission. The opportunity youth are 18- to 24-year-old, primarily minority youth that are not in school or working and can benefit from training programs to secure employment. Inside our warehouse, we set up a computer factory. Computers are returned to light new condition, they're high-quality, as the source is enterprise-grade tech. They receive a new licensed copy of Windows 10, and they're redistributed at a fraction of the cost you can find elsewhere. We were just invited to join the Microsoft Authorized Refurbisher Program, which is a program for the largest refurbishers in the US. We're now one of 12 businesses in that program We're now one of 12 businesses in that program and the only nonprofit. This picture is an example of what we're developing right now in Cook County. The core of our program is to get tech into homes and we distribute through four channels. Retail, bulk, events and online. Our retail is a non traditional setup as shown in the pic. It is almost like a social worker, one on one, where we guide recipients to the tech that they need. The first step is proof of eligibility, which is 200% of the federal poverty level. Once proof is shown, someone is eligible for our services, which are computers, internet repairs and training. Cost is the primary factor why people don't own a computer or adopt internet at home. And our program is designed to be retail at a price point people can afford. So in store, computers start at free and go up to $150. If you can remove that cost barrier, we've found people of all ages and demographics will adopt technology. 58% of the people who come to our program are unemployed. And that's a staggering number that shows the importance of digital skills. We've found in the first year after receiving our services, income increases by 15%. So for every 5,000 homes connected, that's an $8 million aggregate increase in income for those who need it most. Beyond retail, we host and supply bulk events. We ship computers to housing authorities, schools and libraries across the country. We partnered with hundreds of schools on one on one initiatives where we invite the whole school to get a computer. More recently, these events have transitioned to curbside COVID safe, sometimes in partnership with school meal distribution. Where when a family arrives, they're asked, are you here for food, computer or both? I've circled our truck in the picture about two blocks away. You've likely seen the lines at food banks or COVID testing sites, but there's a similar demand and need for tech. We have a newly announced partnership with the state of Illinois and Cook County to distribute 20,000 computers at events similar to this over the next year. PCsrefurbished.com is our online site. Our computers start at $50 with free shipping. We fill a UPS box truck every day of computers to going to homes across the US. This picture is from 2016 when we first launched that site. A home computer doesn't add a lot of value without an internet connection. And internet doesn't add a lot of value without a computer. So we match our computers with unlimited mobile LTE at $15 per month. Hotspot runs on the Sprint network and they're prepaid. So family can pay for a full year and not worry about an internet bill. We also partner with major ISPs and low cost programs. We found that $15 per month is the price point where people can prioritize that bill. There are tons of demands on low income households. But as long as you can show value, that $15 price point is a point that most families can prioritize and afford. More recently, we've started approaching caps on the number of accounts we can add with Sprint. So we decided to start building our own networks. Pictured, you can see Fiber to the Home Project in Texas, which will connect 250 houses there and building an LTE network in Ohio. We partner with major ISPs to use existing unused fiber lines to make these projects a reality. When providing a tool to families that have never owned it, support is extremely important. We also do traditional classroom style training from digital literacy to financial literacy and delivering ongoing training and support to not only get but keep working tech in homes. That's something Howard has mentioned a couple of times. These computers are not returned at the end of the school year. They're owned by a family for ongoing use by the entire household. Computers also have a one year warranty and we offer $25 repairs. We repair thousands of computers each year, even if the computer was not originally distributed by PCs for People. We receive 1,800 phone calls per day and offer phone support in English, Spanish, Somali and Mung. If you've ever received a support call or made a support call to a family member, you can get a little idea of what it takes to receive 1,800 calls per day. We were successful in Minnesota in 2015 and wanted to see if this model could be replicated. We're now past replication and working on scaling. With each new location, our capacity grows and we can serve larger companies to get more tech to help more people. We now have offices in six major metros across the US and we recently sent a record placing 700 computers in homes in a single day. Our first location in Illinois launched late last year in Metro East with the aid of an Illinois COVID relief grant. In partnership with the Urban League, Girl Scouts and Southwest Illinois Leadership Collaborative, this location is now executing events in the 41 counties in Southern Illinois. I think everyone on the call is aware of this, but thanks to a partnership with Cook County, the county has offered a warehouse in Oak Forest, which is currently being built out. Just announced by Governor Pritzker, these two distribution hubs will allow PCs for People to execute a coordinated statewide initiative with a one year goal of distributing 20,000 computers. Even though we're building out that Cook County hub, we've launched a partnership with Illinois Connected Communities to schedule for computer distribution events in Cook County starting next week. When asked what our biggest challenge is, my answer is always supply to meet the community demand for affordable tech. Computers have been shipped in from existing outstate PCs for People locations to kick off these events, but we're seeking introductions to corporations and government entities that would be interested in our IT recycling services. I like to say every community has the resources to end the digital divide, but lacks a program like PCs for People to redistribute retired tech. The result of our four step model is 450,000 people connected in all 50 states across the US. Each dot on this map is a computer. And when overlaid with a heat map of poverty, I was amazed the poverty map matched almost exactly to our computer distribution map. So our program is currently touching every pocket of poverty across the US. Thrilled to be able to present today and to be able to do our work in Cook County and across the state of Illinois. Thank you.
Thank you so, so Casey for highlighting and for your presentation that that pretty much highlights what you all are doing and what the partnership looks like. I did see a question in the chat from our Commissioner, Commissioner Wajardo that says where, hold on, I lost it. Where do you get those PCs? They are recycled, but how many can you get for the county? I believe a part of this was already discussed towards the end of your presentation, but if you want to reiterate that.
Yeah, there, there was an address in the slides there which we can distribute for the Cook County location. We accept individual drop offs of computers and also deliver the service I mentioned to corporations of all sizes. We just ask for 15 computers for pickup from companies and the service is free, free pickup, free data wiping, free recycling, unless there's the old tube TVs or CRTs. There's a charge to responsibly recycle those. But free pickup for businesses that are interested in that and they can find more at pcsforpeople.org.
Madam Chair, it's Howard. Can I add a couple of things about anticipating some questions regarding funding, at least up in our part of the state? And we want to recognize the JUF for their generous contribution to this. Also, there's been a repurposing of some monies that used to go to bringing telephones to rural and I mean landline telephones to rural areas in the county. I'm sorry, in the state. And that money is not needed as much anymore and it's going to be redirected to this purpose. So it's not that they don't need money. It's just that they came with money and that's a lot of it hard work on the governor's office and the office of the president. And we are very grateful, very grateful for those funds to bring them here.
Thank you, Howard. Yeah, that was the follow up question that Commissioner Wajardo had in the chat. Where does the funding come from and is the county providing the funding? So thank you for addressing that. Were there any other questions from any of the other commission members that you'd like to bring up? Yes, Commissioner Raymer.
Yes, hi. First of all, thank you for sharing and thank you for starting this amazing nonprofit. My role is in community giving at BMO Harris Bank and I'm a personal supporter, fan, obsessed person about social enterprises and their ability to meet societal needs using a business model. So congratulations on all your success. It's so great to see. What is your approach to mobile? I mean, this was all laptops, these are hardware things, but you know, the mobile devices are an easy thing for people to utilize and and want and all of that. Do you have an approach regarding the mobile scene, if you will?
We, we try to do the computer based, so desktop and laptop. And people can do some productivity on their phone, but if you're doing resumes, if you're doing papers, if you're trying to do living wage jobs that require digital skills, you're going to need a computer, you're going to need office productivity. And that's what we try to do is provide those tools that are needed for that in the home. So people can can increase their income, get those jobs, get their school work done as productively as anyone else would. We do receive some phones, we distribute tablets. We do programs for seniors where we distribute a lot of tablets and there are places where those things work very well. But in general, in homes, we try to get full laptops and computers placed.
Follow up question about the, after they receive the laptops and computers, the education that they receive both in how to use them. And then you also mentioned financial literacy. Who, what is that like and who are your partners in that? Do you have a volunteer kind of model for that type of thing? Or is it you're, you're hiring your staff and they're all kind of doing it?
Staff, we also work with AmeriCorps Vistas that deliver some of that training. We've worked with different, like you mentioned bank. We've worked with different banks on different training programs for that. So a variety of volunteers, other organizations and corporate partners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. It sounds great. So I, I lead an organization based in the West Inglewood neighborhood. And one of the challenges that we see in terms of it's, it's, you know, digital, digital access is, is it's not just getting the, you know, computer or phone, but it's actually keeping it because of challenges around housing insecurity. And even if you're in a home, it's just not being type of place that's conducive to keeping a highly sensitive piece of like, you know, tech material or whatever. So I'm just wondering, as we build these things out, you know, giving someone a laptop that may only be there until, you know, someone's potentially facing an eviction while they're on the way to economic security or while someone lives in a home that that may be susceptible to flooding or may not be heated and the components are kind of damaged. But there are additional supports around those things, opportunities for people to return to get, you know, subsequent materials without being kind of chastised for not being able to take care of a laptop or something like that. Just wondering for people who are a little more housing insecure and can't necessarily hold on to the material, how do we, how do we support those folks through this process?
Yep, my, my oversimplification is food, shelter, computer. If we can meet the basic needs, let's get a computer and internet into a home to unlock the rest. The hotspots that I mentioned are good for housing insecurity. If you can have a laptop and hotspot, it's a little easier to transition through life with that and keep a hold of it. We also allow up to three computers per year. So if you have a household that needs multiple computers, you can come in and get more than one. If you got one, something happened to it, you don't have it anymore for any reason, come back in and get another one. We're not going to ask any questions or reasons why. So we do try to support those cases.
That's really great. Thank you.
And again, this, this, I'm sorry, Commissioner, but this puts down why the solution about own is, is all the more important with the opportunity that people have to get. Thank you. The opportunity for people to get up to three devices per year. This is, as I asked Casey, I think in our very first phone call, it says your PCs for people and not PCs for students. This is not a program just for your children. It is for that, but it's also for the adults looking for healthcare, looking to relate to government services. And in cases of where people are now sharing computers, this is a very, very important longer term solution for our region that doesn't really exist today. And that is to have multiple devices under one household. Because many of us know that families can be large and needs can be diverse. So I, I think that this was one of the winning attributes of PCs for People. Thank you.
And one, one last point for me, unless there's more questions. The funding was mentioned, we try to be sustainable. So the wholesale that we can do of servers and networks and switches and commodities can fund a lot of our model. When someone comes in and gets a computer, prices start at free, go up to $150. We average $30 to $50 that families contribute. So not a lot, but just enough to cover some of the licensing and labor to put those computers together. And then different corporations have asked us, well, do you need computers or do you need money? And usually we say computers, you know, that's, it's what we do. But there are different initiatives or projects that corporations sponsor a fund. So that costs we need to cover our tech. We'll have a fund that'll offset the cost of that event and distribution. So that's another way that we partner with corporations and keep our model funded and sustainable.
And I want to, you know, I think something that you said, Casey, is extremely important. The fact that it, we've learned during the pandemic that sometimes you don't need just one computer because you can have a family of even two individuals, three individuals. And in a lot of cases, you know, upwards of five folks. I know for, for us Latinos, that that's the case a lot of the times. And I've seen that a lot in my, with my constituency, which has, was something that I didn't even, obviously, we know it exists, but didn't see what a challenge it would be when individuals were switching to remote learning or remote work of how many people might need access to a laptop, a desktop or even a tablet. So I think that that's important to highlight the fact that, you know, PCs for People also takes that into consideration and acknowledges that technology or giving access to technology doesn't just mean one desktop, one laptop per household. So I appreciate that. There was a question from Commissioner Espinoza on the chat that talks, that asked a little bit about the digital trainings that are offered and whether they're offered in other languages. Because I know that you mentioned that there's, I believe the hotline you said is in multiple languages, but wondering about the training.
We do deliver training in multiple languages. Our, our offices, we make sure our staff put training for those areas like Mung and St. Paul here is one of the primary languages that we'll distribute training in. In Denver, Spanish is one of the languages. So when we're doing those trainings, we're making sure their staff put the languages that are required for that, that partner, that school, that event.
Thank you. Commissioner Yonin, you have your hand up.
Thank you. One of the challenges that, you know, is always there for government. And I don't know, maybe you just have some testimonials of what happens with schools or, you know, a big, second largest county in the country and population like Cook. What's kind of sometimes those internal roadblocks like, well, we have to dispose in a competitive way the, the materials that we have. Have you had success and perhaps intergovernmental type agreements or some kind of agreements that allow government in a competitive way to dispose of the electronic, you know, technologies that they have? I'd love to hear some of your success stories there. If you have some.
Yeah, we do respond to competitive RFPs all the time for government and for corporations and have a decent track record on winning those. Sometimes counties are paying to get rid of their stuff and our service being free is a big win there, so you can remove that. Some of the RFPs are written, do you have a way that this can benefit residents? Taxpayers paid for this? And our program can easily check that box where some others can't. So we're happy to go through competitive RFPs, fill those out and usually have a good chance of winning that business. The other piece I said very quickly is there's standard industry certifications for data wiping, for responsible recycling, making sure nothing ends up in one of the lakes that are right nearby there. And we have those certifications. So we can check the certification boxes, the OSHA compliant boxes and win that business in a competitive fashion that's fair.
Casey, a question that I had, you mentioned 20,000 computers will be made available. Is this throughout the whole state or was this specifically in Cook County? Can you clarify that for me?
That's the goal for statewide to start with. But one of the nice things about our program, we mentioned the sourcing connections, the more computers we get, the more go out. Everyone we distribute, someone refers their friend, neighbor, sister, look what I just got. So by having that distribution hub in Cook County, we hope to establish the relationships to get more tech to greatly exceed that goal in Cook County.
Thank you. And I believe we have one more question from Commissioner Alston regarding the workforce development aspects for employment opportunities with your enterprise. Do you have a forecast for the number of jobs you project for Cook County or and/or Illinois?
We will hire on our staff around 35 people in Illinois and about half of those in Cook County. And we have planned cohorts of 40 at a time and four cohorts a year that would be going through those training programs. So that's around 160 people trained in Cook County in IT skills.
Commissioner Alston, did you have a follow up to that?
No. No, I think that that addresses the question and I'm also thinking about the following one with that in terms of those that you train in cohorts but are not hired by your enterprise. What are your thoughts in terms of connecting them to employment opportunities? And how do you all provide that, that service?
That's where Karen Norrington Reeves' expertise comes in is they already are connected to the opportunity youth and there's an abundance of IT jobs and a lack of people to fill them. So they, they help on both sides. They're identifying most in need of that training and having the jobs lined up for people that are successful through the program.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Any other follow-up questions or final questions that the commission members have? If not, Casey, can you remind us if anybody that's listening that has extra PCs, whether they through their employer or just personally at home that maybe one that they want to donate, is there, can you remind us where the donations can go to and what is the process? I believe you're unmuted. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, pcsforpeople.org, there's a technology request for pickup form. So fill that out, our team will be in touch and we can organize the pickup.
And I'm hoping that both our presentations could be made available to our members and anyone who would like to look at it. Your last page, Casey, has the contact details. And one of my pages has a hot link to actually see the governor and President Preck week will make the announcement.
Thank you, Howard. I see one final question. Do you offer ongoing workforce development training? Irene Chair was not, she said that she was unclear on that.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about with Karen Norrington Reeves, where we'd have opportunity youth cohorts of 40 at a time. It would have a mix of work experience and classroom style training. So they would get both the IT book education as well as hands-on experience. Because there, we offer unique, every piece of technology coming through our facility and an opportunity refurbish and repair hands-on experience.
Thank you. And the final question we have on here, if you can share with all of us your Facebook page information where individuals can follow you or refer into other, maybe constituencies or clients to.
Sounds great. I'll share it here.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, Howard, were there any final closing comments that you had for us in regards to this?
Thank you for 30 seconds. I believe that Casey is modest in his goals for the second largest county in the United States. I believe we're going to do better. And I think it has a lot to do with the people who have yet to be touched, have yet to understand what is available. As Casey said, when you tell someone in IT, including within the county and the sheriff's office, that there's ways of getting rid of equipment safely, that instead of having to pay for it to be picked up and paid for it to be destroyed, there are ways for this to happen, free to government, free to corporations. That's an important word. And worry-free, I think, is the final part of this equation. Your data are not going to end up, you know, on a computer in some neighborhood that you prefer that computer had been wiped. And so I think that 20,000 is low. I think the number of people he needs, I'm hoping it's low. I hope all of this is a day that people look back on and say, do you remember when you thought it would be like that? And I think we can make it happen. I really do. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you, Casey, too.
Thank you all.
Thank you both for your presentation. So we're going to move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the committee reports. So I just want to remind everybody that we have officially finalized the committee scripts and checklist and the protocols for each of the commission. I know we started reconvening some of the committees. So we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page on, you know, the do's, the don'ts, and also the different protocols that, that each chair should and also committee members should know about as we start again convening those a little bit more. So we do want to remind you, we've, we've gone through ethics and we've reread the ordinance that establishes this commission. And we were, we, we found that the committees are not, quote unquote, non-voting. And Quorum is specifically addressing the commission members that are part of those committees. So that was something that was unclear with some of our members and we were able to verify that. So we just wanted to make that announcement. And I think that any proposals that, that come forward from the committees will be shared with the full body when we do the discussion and the report backs from the committees. And then we will take a vote in this body because that's what the ordinance calls for. So no official votes will be taken into, will, will be actually addressed in the committees and be all addressed here as, as a whole in the commission. So we're gonna maybe go around and see if there's any updates. I know the Commission on Social and Human Capital did meet earlier this week. So I don't know if we want to start off with Chair Cooley and if you can give us a quick update on your meetings and anything relevant that we should be taking up for consideration. Any recommendations, I should think.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Naya. We were able to, we had our second online meeting yesterday with good participation, about nine members and then four members. So we have about 12 members and about eight of those are commissioners or seven of those are commissioners. Really looking to set an agenda for 2021. Looking at, of course, recovery from the impacts of COVID with a strong focus on workforce development and wanting to have actually thought, talk through having Commissioner Norrington Reeves present to our committee just to have a better understanding of what the county is doing around workforce development in a more comprehensive way and look at opportunities for collaboration and being able to enhance that and make recommendations policy-wise back to the committee, I mean, back to the, the county. But also wanting to look at the opportunities through procurement to create new opportunities for businesses in the county to be able to expand their opportunities, which then of course would expand workforce development as well as thinking about, talking in, Commissioner Austin brought up yesterday as well, seeing technology and making sure that the digital light of capacity for residents of Cook County aren't being left behind. So it was great to hear that, the presentation today and be able to fold in the work that Casey's organization is doing. And then conversations around how best to forward recommendations for policy pushes at the state level and even beyond around issues that would help deal with workforce opportunity. One that Olga Baptista, who's a member of the committee with the Alliance for Great Lakes, is advocating for and will be doing some more. And we'll have a presentation on this at our next committee meeting in February on CIGA, which is the Clean Energy Jobs Act, which is before the legislature right now, which does have provisions for making sure that all communities have access to the new jobs that will be coming from the clean energy sector and making sure that community members are actually getting access into the trades who control a lot of those opportunities as well. So really, we'll be hearing a presentation about that and thinking about how we, if we'd like to move forward on that. And then Commissioner Aglape has volunteered to serve as co-chair for the committee. Thank you very much. And also brought up some other things that will be coming up at the state level and potentially at federal level, especially around family leave opportunities that, you know, the crisis, COVID crisis is highlighted. And I'm sure Aglape is available to make a mention of that as well.
Hi. I think from the meeting that we had yesterday, just to add on to what Commissioner Cooley's outlined. You know, we discussed centering also as a committee, what our recommendations are going to be for the commission given racial equity and what our principal, guiding principles, we wanted to determine what that would be. As some of you may know, I believe just earlier today, the Biden-Harris administration just came out with an executive order on racial equity and supporting underserved communities as well. And it's timely because yesterday we discussed having criteria and outline as to what is it that we are, what are our hallmarks and our indicators of what we want to put forth as recommendations, be it action steps or policies for the commission to consider. Pay family leave is one of it, but another one given with the Black Caucus also having one of the four pillars of economic empowerment with the state of Illinois. Today, I actually just hosted a roundtable, policy roundtable with Representative Buckner, who's the Chair of the House Black Legislative Caucus. And in line with that is also, you know, accessing fair lending and reflecting what Commissioner Cooley said, what our committee's been discussing is also access to contracts and how that also reflects access to minorities getting contracts in the state as well in terms of the economic empowerment agenda that the Black Caucus had. So really trying to center and figure out, determine what our guiding principles are going to be in terms of what is it that this committee will be recommending to the commission? It isn't just in terms of policy, but processes, taking a look at things, what are recommended actions or what are things that are doing with, that the county is doing well that it could expand upon even more or enhance also. So wanted to lift that up in terms of racial equity and the underserved communities in Cook County as well. So that's something that we all felt strongly that is, you know, not, not just providing that, but as what is the justification for the recommendations that we will be providing as well.
Thank you. Yeah. Big priority for us is to be setting those, those principles and guidelines for what we'd want to be examining and what the primary benefits what we'd be recommending for around equity. So thank you.
And I believe one of the reasons is we wanted to center it, of course, on workforce development, small business, entrepreneurship, economic development and procurement. Seeing as in roughly 10 years, 2030 to 2032, we will have in this country, no less Cook County, is a majority minority workforce. So what does that mean? And that led us to the discussion of, okay, how do we center racial equity? Making sure that that's represented in the policies and recommendations and action steps that we want to lift up to the commission. It's a pretty significant statistic of majority minority. But given also that we are acknowledging a racial wealth gap in household wealth and income and incomes are also volatile, given COVID-19. Now, how do we continue to center racial equity and serving underserved, you know, supporting underserved communities in Cook County as well?
And highlighting that we are also looking at expanding and looking at alternative workplaces as well. Also exploring and understanding what cooperatives mean and collaborations between businesses as well as worker-owned cooperatives.
Perfect. Thank you so much for the update. Were there any questions for the chairs? From any of the members?
Hi. Not so much a question, but more of a comment. Definitely want to collaborate and I may be speaking out of turn because I haven't consulted with Wendy. But as co-chair for Financial Capital, it really seems direct alignment to have conversations or collaborations around accessing fair lending. Because that's something that is certainly within the financial capital committee's purview.
Exactly. Same with the co-ops. I know we were going to fold under the, the co-op movement and making sure that Cook County resources were paying attention to the co-op sector.
Yeah, absolutely. I believe there's, there's some great synergy there, especially with the legislation that passed both houses in regards to the 36% rate cap on lending, you know, on payday loans and other loans in Illinois. I believe we're waiting for the governor to sign that. But also the CRA federally is up for review and it's only up for review rarely, every, you know, a decade or so. And that's a way to, for the county actually, to weigh in on how we strengthen regulating banks and financial institutions for fair lending. Community Reinvestment Act is one of the laws in this ecosystem of civil rights for fair and lending acts in addition to the Equal Credit Opportunity Act as well. Something that also most individuals and communities are not aware that, you know, the public can weigh in on how banks and financialist institutions are also graded as well. So that's also something to lift up. And I know that the Illinois Legislature is also looking at having a state CRA as well to complement a federal one. Without, without, you know, reinventing the wheel, of course, there's been discussions on that. I'm not sure how that would look like. I think the federal one with the new administration is something that, that people are taking one step at a time. But it, of course, it's something to lift up for all the organizations. And commissioners here is that we, we do have an opportunity to, to weigh in on federal laws that regulate fair lending and credit access in underserved communities in this country.
Right. So I know Roger and Jerry, you are part of our Financial Capital Committee as well. Your eyebrows raised, Roger. No, I have you both as, you know, people who want us to be on the Financial Capital Committee. And we want to get our meetings in stone here. And we're thinking of second Wednesday of every month at 11:00 AM. So we'll send out the invites for that. If there is a real hard stop for you guys on that, let me know. I have other things to say about the Financial Capital Committee, but I want to make sure I give you guys, I don't want to start off on anything if you're not finished yet.
Co-chairs Cooley and Aglape, are we, are we good? Okay, perfect. Yes, please, Commissioner or Chair Raymar.
Yeah, sure. And, and Kristen, please, this is your floor as well. The one thing I wanted to say though, that just struck my mind, this PCs for people and that initiative to get into individual homes, I'm wondering if there could be a small business component to that attention where there are small business owners that need computers, that need that tech advice as well, and just making sure that they're folded in to this resource as well. So I'd like to kind of, I'd like to put that on our agenda as a committee.
I'd like to second that if I could. I was actually thinking the same thing and wanting to reach out to Karen. As I said, we, I just had a polit, financial policy, small business roundtable this morning with Representative Buckner. And it was really focused on supporting small businesses in underserved areas. And some of the policies are earned income tax credit. So those businesses that may be eligible for that would fall into the federal poverty level of 250% that may be eligible for a computer as well.
Yeah. So yeah, there's work we can do to get the work out.
Yeah, yeah. Good synergy there.
Yep. That was it. Kristen.
Chair Freeman?
Um, no additional updates. Definitely will be continuing to follow legislation. There has been, you know, the, the new round of PPP has opened up. And so just trying to keep a pulse on especially new administrative changes, some of the needs as it pertains to COVID. I think we're going to have some very interesting times ahead. So I am, I'm excited for the work that the Financial Capital Committee will be able to hopefully push through on the policy front.
Perfect. Yes. I am glad that you mentioned the new round of PPP. I know that our office is co-sponsoring a few virtual webinars to make sure that small businesses have that aspect and that financial security and assistance during these difficult times. So thank you for reminding us about that. And yes, if both co-chair Raymar and Freeman, if you all can give us the, the schedule of the upcoming meetings so that we can distribute the information widely and make it public. Thank you both. Can we go to the Public Capital Committee? I know we have one, our Chair Yonin available. I'm not sure if you have any updates for us.
Sure. Just that, you know, again, one of the things we've been highlighting is our Fair Transit Program that on January 4th was launched. Sure. Just that, you know, again, one of the things we've been highlighting is our fair transit program that on January 4th was launched. And, you know, again, the part of the fair transit that really, you know, was the key to, to continue to have, you know, social innovation focus on is that integrated fare card system. So January 4th, what we launched is that the half price on the Metro Electric and the Rock Island did go into effect. We got some good PR on that. You know, obviously, we're doing it during a time where transit ridership is down. But we really believe that working out a little bit of the kinks within it right now is critical. And that's why it was really important to have now launched this three-year pilot. But it's still one of those where, as we're gathering some of this data, is it that incentive for someone to have a half-price, you know, metro fare, bring you downtown, but you still need to depend on a CTA bus or train to maybe take that last leg of your commute? And that's where, again, the innovative fare card system and advocacy in this group, keeping that as a high priority. Right now, there's nothing more than just making sure that, you know, we can line up the advocacy when we have to put a little pressure on all the service boards to be able to collaborate on that system. So again, we're just getting some of those things started, but it is exciting, at least that that part of this pilot was launched on January 4th. So just wanted to give that update. And then we have a committee meeting, we're just finalizing Patrick's schedule, but we will be meeting on February 5th. I'll get that information out there for public notice on that between 11:00 and 12:00 o'clock on February 5th. So those are the only updates I have right now.
Perfect. Thank you. And our and our final Intellectual Capital Committee, I'm not sure if we've been able to meet. I don't know, Chair Malone, if you, if you have any updates for us on the committee?
Hi, everyone. Sorry, things have been a little slow and are in, still trying to figure out kind of where intellectual capital fits in this moment. So no updates yet, but hopefully some will be forthcoming, generally speaking. I'm thinking that myself and Commissioner Naya will have some updates over the next day.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair Malone. Okay. With that said, are there any other, oh, I have Commissioner Juarez has her hand up.
I just have a quick question, and this is actually for everyone. I know that the second round of PPP is coming out. And I know Wendy, I think Howard and some others, we were in a, Jerry, in a conversation, I think in December, a while ago, about how do we ensure that there's enough information out there? And so I was thinking particularly like the co-ops that were denied, that we were trying to get them to apply. So by any chance, do you guys know any updates or any assistance? Jerry, I don't know if it's maybe you or like what agencies can actually, like, where can we refer these co-ops so they can go try to apply for the, you know, the second round of PPP?
On the chat, this is Sushi. Irene just posted some information regarding two upcoming PPP webinars that the county is hosting. One is actually being held tomorrow morning. So I encourage them to, you to send individuals to those two resources. The Illinois Immigration, Illinois Business Immigration Coalition, IBEC, has been our partner and has been really great at rolling up their sleeves and helping individuals with their applications and walking people through questions. So they're the ones that are partnering with us and hosting these webinars. So please encourage people, especially the worker co-op folks, to attend these webinars. And we can continue working through IBEC to make sure that they get specific information.
And we are also having webinars with the SBA as our ongoing bimonthly webinars. We just had one, we're having one next Tuesday as well. We have national webinars in both English and Spanish that are coming out also. I know Commissioner Juarez, there's also SBA Lender Match is where small business owners can identify who's actually participating as a financial institution in the PPP. So I think there's the nuance there of, of who's actually also participating in it. Not all financial institutions are. So I think using the SBA, I would recommend there's that, the lendermatch.gov would be, would be extremely helpful also. So, and I can share that information with the staff to send up and to send it to you afterwards.
Perfect. I think one of the questions on the chat was if any of these trainings or webinars are in Spanish. Bureau Chief Flores?
I'll have to confirm if it's been very good about going back and forth between the English ones and Spanish ones. And we've also translated some if they are not already on, if they're not conducted in Spanish. But we can, we'll share that with your team so that they can distribute the information.
Will do. We'll send it to the commission members once we get it.
Yeah, we just had one in Spanish nationally today. I'll share when the next one is going to be scheduled also in Spanish. We're having them frequently. The deadline, at least so far, is March 31st, so it's, it's not a lot of time. But we do need to help get the word out about the PPP with our SBA partners. There was literally a lot of money, millions left on the table last time. And it's interesting because I, you know, a lot of business owners felt that the money had run out. There's confusion as to where, where the funding's coming from. So literally, and, and, you know, Commissioner Flores is going to attest this, we were helped, you, we really needed to get the funds out. And so there might be some hesitation with, with business owners of them thinking maybe there are no funding left, there, there's funding there. We have through March 31st to help make sure that people obtain that funding. One of the points that I made with a small business owner I was counseling last week actually was they may think they don't need the funding as they're looking at their, their, their cash flow. But this is good through 24 weeks. And so, you know, if you are working with small business owners is to make sure they may want to look at what their project, what their cash flow is midsummer to late summer. We don't know how this virus is going to be holding the economy at its mercy, and that's where we are. And, you know, I think that's one of the points to also recommend to small business owners is you can use, you have through, you know, a, you pick your chunk of when you can apply that. But look at your cash flow and determine if whether or not you may need this loan. And if you use it properly, it's 100% forgivable, provided you follow the guidelines. So I think that's one of the considerations I noticed in counseling a couple of business owners that they didn't think because of the deadline, they're thinking, oh, that's when I need to, I'm, I'll need to use it shortly afterwards, if that's not the case, so.
And thank you for reminding us about the forgiveness portion of the loans, Commissioner Aglape. Because I think the word loan scares a lot of small business owners when you're talking about, like, do I want to get myself, you know, in, in a position where I'm going to owe thousands of dollars? And does that do good by my business or not, right? So I think that the message needs to get out there that there are ways that, you know, either parts of the loan will be forgiven or the whole thing. So thank you for highlighting that again. A few comments on the chat. We had Irene mention some of the webinars are set forward for the 22nd, which is tomorrow. Then we have another one for the 26th and the 27th. And Commissioner Freeman wanted to remind us that Self-Help Federal Credit Union is doing a PPP. I believe those were the only comments on the chat. So with, without further ado, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move along the the agenda. I believe we went over all of the committees and the updates from the committees. But I do want to mention a few other things in the new business section of our agenda. So there are a few dates that we're proposing for our upcoming meetings, and I just want to make sure that everybody knows this. I talked to most of you, and I've made the announcement that we are, because of COVID, because we had a hard time with convening the, the committee during the pandemic and that we are going to be shifting to a bimonthly meeting, meaning we're going to meet one month, then we're not going to meet the other month, then we'll meet the other month. Because a lot of the work that you all are doing, again, in your respective roles, we all know that this is volunteer, and we really appreciate everything that you bring to the table. But we want to be respectful of your time and be respectful of the work. And sometimes we, we're more intentional when, when we have time and more time to, to be able to, to have the discussion. So the proposed dates on here are March 25th, which is the Fourth Thursday. And we're switching to Fourth Thursday for March because we have a board meeting in March, and I will not be able to chair that one. And so we're moving it a week back to March 25th. Then we're proposing May 20th, which is the Third Thursday of that month, July 15th, Third Thursday of that month. September 23rd is the Fourth Thursday, again, due to a board meeting. And then our final meeting that we'll have for the year is November 11th. That one is the Second Thursday due to budget that we have at the county level and also Thanksgiving. So we have a few things that we need to make sure that we're accommodating. And we're gonna have the committees meet depending on the chairs and how we figure it out, either in a monthly basis or again, on a bimonthly. And again, this is due to limitation of time or scheduling. So we'll be talking to all the chairs and co-chairs to ensure that, that we get those schedules set. I wanted to bring it, bring this up for discussion. Are there any specific, maybe things that we missed with these meetings? An important date of, of any sort that maybe will prevent some or most of you from attending any of these meetings? And we could put the, the dates on the, on the chat as well, as a reminder. Anybody have any feedback?
It's Howard. When, when is the September one? I just want to make sure around the Jewish holidays up. 23rd, you're fine.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right. So again, we'll send this via email, and if there are any feedbacks or any, any specific conflicts with your schedule, just let us know. We are, and as part of making the meetings shift a little bit so that they're not monthly, we are going to make an amendment to the ordinance, the enabling ordinance for this commission. So just want to give you all a heads up. And again, do the, the final reminder on the annual report. We may be reaching out to you all as we finalize that, so we may be reaching out individually for any quotes or any specific feedback about the committee, the committees or the commission. So are there any questions on that end? Looks like we're good. Okay, so wonderful. It looks like we are finishing right on time. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move Yonin.
Okay, Commissioner Yonin.
Second. Second.
Okay, Commissioner Raymar, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you all so very much for joining us today, and we'll be in touch. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you very much.